Well, I'll start again. We'll use these microphones. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm president of the Minneapolis City Council, and we have a number of items to deal with today, a very full agenda. But the first thing we're going to do is honor a very long-serving city employee who is retiring and has been a part of the leadership team in the city for a very, very long time. And I'm going to read a resolution that will talk about just exactly how long. So Peter Ginder has been deputy city attorney for a very long time. He entered city employment in 1981. And he has been our advisor. The city attorney's office in Minneapolis is an extremely important part of our enterprise, and our city attorney's office is the backbone of the work that we do here as far as the legal enterprise, which is very, very important, of course, in our city. And so we have a resolution that we're going to present, and I will read it. It says, "Whereas Peter Ginder, Deputy City Attorney, first entered employment in the city attorney's office as a prosecutor in the Criminal Division on April 13, 1981, having graduated from St. John's University and the University of Minnesota Law School; whereas Mr. Ginder's extraordinary talents and skills were recognized and acknowledged from the start, and after mastering the craft of criminal prosecution, transferred from the Criminal Division to the Civil Division, where he was rapidly promoted through the attorney ranks, and was appointed as Deputy City Attorney in charge of the Civil Division of the City Attorney's Office in June 2003; whereas Mr. Ginder has been involved in every major legal matter at the city over the past couple of decades, personally handling many of the most complex, high-profile litigation cases and other projects, and has consistently, throughout his 35-year tenure, provided the highest caliber legal services, advice, and guidance to the city and its leaders; whereas Mr. Ginder has served four mayors and 60 city council members during his tenure, with Mayor Don Fraser and Alice Rainville as council president when he made his first presentation during a closed council session, all of whom have relied on his skilled counsel and advice; and whereas Mr. Ginder has been an outstanding manager and leader of the Civil Division, shaping and mentoring a talented group of attorneys, helping form the best civil law firm in the city, and ensuring the future quality of the city attorney's office after his retirement; and whereas Mr. Ginder has the uncanny ability to remain calm and unflappable," and that's his trademark, that's his trademark, "applying his vast knowledge of municipal law, recalling case precedents by name at the drop of a hat, and dispensing sound advice and leadership, especially in critical, high-pressure situations; whereas Mr. Ginder is also extremely effective at all he undertakes, from managing dozens of direct reports and hundreds of legal matters to such things as culinary skill, where he has racked up repeated awards in the office's annual chili cook-off, and provided advice that has improved the pie crust-making skills of the current city attorney." Did you tell her to use lard? Is that what's going on? Okay. All right. "Whereas Mr. Ginder has exemplified all the values of the city attorney's office, the legal profession, and the best ideals of public service, including a commitment to the highest ethical standards and excellence in providing legal representation and advice; and whereas Mr. Ginder has dedicated his career to serving the public, and has justly earned the respect of all who have had the privilege of working with him, and of those with whom he has dealt; and whereas Mr. Ginder will be deeply missed by the city's elected officials, really and truly, department heads, staff, and fellow members of the city attorney's office as a legal advisor, colleague, and a friend; and whereas the city council wishes to recognize Peter Ginder's extraordinary contributions, career, and dedication to the city of Minneapolis. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor and the city council commend Peter Ginder for his dedicated and exemplary service to the city of Minneapolis, and expresses its deep gratitude and appreciation to him for his outstanding commitment to the city; and be it further resolved that the mayor and the city council congratulate Peter Ginder for his many significant accomplishments, and wish him much happiness and fulfillment in all of his new ventures." Thank you. Our city attorney was unable to be here today because of a family commitment, and so Mr. Spencer Kronk, who's our city coordinator, will read a letter from her.
Thank you, Council President, and on behalf of Susan Siegel, our city attorney, she asked me to say a few words. She says, "Two words: thank you. Thank you for your guidance, wise advice, and counsel; for your leadership in the office and the city; for so generously sharing your talent and skill; for saving the city tens of millions of dollars and helping keep the ship of state on stable waters; for developing and molding a top-notch civil law office that would carry on your legacy of excellence and integrity; but most of all, thank you for being such an extraordinary friend and colleague. You are irreplaceable. All of her best wishes for fun and joy in your future. And on behalf of all of your colleagues here at the city of Minneapolis, we echo Susan's words, and thank you so much, Peter, for your dedication, commitment, and professionalism during your tenure at the city. Thank you very much."
The resolution there, nice reading. And then we have a special presentation, because Mr. Ginder has 30 years of service, the Father of Water statue, which we're delighted to present to you. Thank you. I'd like to have a say a few words.
Having sat through a few of these, and understanding that the council has a full agenda, and brevity is the better part of wit, I'll try and be short. I've been here a long time. In fact, I was on the original Employee Advisory Committee that developed the Father of Water statue approximately 30 years ago, and I never actually felt that I would actually stay around long enough to get one, but I'm very pleased that that program went forward and that I'm able to receive one. Two things I would like to say is, one, it's been a tremendous honor and privilege for me to serve elected officials, and to have the opportunity to give advice, occasionally looking to. But it's been really a tremendous honor and privilege to do that, and you don't spend 35 years working at an entity like this without leaving with great affection for both the institution and all of the people that I've worked with. And I've had a tremendous opportunity to work with department heads throughout the city, managers, frontline workers, and have almost uniformly been just really pleased and surprised and gratified by the commitment that people have to the city of Minneapolis. And especially need to thank the people in the city attorney's office I've worked with. I will simply say that at this stage, there has never been a better city attorney's office in the history that I've been with the city, from top to bottom. The competency, the professionalism, the intellectual power, the commitment is just tremendous. And so I really want to thank those people because much of what I've achieved is only because I've been able to work with really great people. And finally, I want to say that to the extent that I've achieved something at this office, there's an old saying that behind every good man is a better woman. My wife, Jerry, has been a tremendous support, encouragement, and patience while I've done this job, and I really want to thank her for that, and thank all of you for allowing me to work for you. Thank you.
And we also have a guest from the Parkinson's Association. Is that correct? That must come up. We have a unique position at the city of Minneapolis where, because the 35W Bridge is in our city, if we ask to have the bridge lit in a particular color to honor an organization, an effort, we have a city council resolution. And so this morning, we have the honor of recognizing April 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Month. So why don't you introduce yourself and come on in the microphone.
Hi, I'm Erin McGee. I'm program manager at the National Parkinson Foundation of Minnesota.
Okay. So I'm going to read the resolution, and I'm not going to read every detail, but I'll try and get through this in a timely way. And it says, "Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, 1 million Americans have been diagnosed with the disease. The National Parkinson's Foundation was founded in 1957 and is the only organization maintaining a singular focus on improving the quality of care for those living with Parkinson's Disease, and has an extensive network of chapters, support groups, and centers of excellence around the United States and the world. And it was founded in Minnesota as the Parkinson's Association of Minnesota and renamed in June 2011. It's the state affiliate chapter of the National Parkinson's Foundation and has, again, its central mission of positively affecting the lives of individuals and families living with Parkinson's through improved care and support, community education, engagement, and advocacy. And Minnesota ranks third among all states in the nation per capita of those living with Parkinson's Disease. So whereas in Minnesota and surrounding communities, the Parkinson's Association drives awareness and outreach by bringing together thought leaders on Parkinson's Disease and also pharmacists, nurses, rehabilitation therapists, who improve patient outcomes and also act upon areas of common interest and concern, the National Parkinson's Foundation funds outreach, education, support groups, and a unique respite care program which reaches families throughout Minnesota. And in the coming year, the Parkinson Foundation will announce new grant opportunities to support individuals and families in earlier stages of the diagnosis. April has been proclaimed as Worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month to help promote awareness of the need for a multi-disciplinary approach that includes local wellness and caregiver groups, as well as the need for increased research, education, and support to address the devastating effects of Parkinson's Disease. And the National Parkinson's Foundation will host a fundraiser on April 14, 2016 to highlight its education, support research initiatives, and ultimately find a cure for the disease. And as part of this special event, the I-35W Bridge will be lit in cyan. What color is that? Oh, okay. All right. Turquoise, I'd call that turquoise. Okay, okay, okay. To commemorate all of those whose lives have been impacted by Parkinson's Disease, and also to be a visible sign of hope for a future where Parkinson's Disease no longer affects individuals and families. So therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that April 2016 is proclaimed to be Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in the city of Minneapolis, all residents are encouraged to participate in activities and events which support the fight against Parkinson's Disease and support efforts which aid and assist individuals and families living with Parkinson's Disease. So we will pass this resolution later as part of our agenda. Okay? You want to say a few things?
Sure.
Okay.
As many of you know, we have Michael J. Fox, Muhammad Ali, who are the big names with Parkinson's Disease, but we don't know how many people actually live. And we're hoping that the Senate has passed the bill, but hopefully the House will pass the bill to make a national registry for Parkinson's Disease and also MS. That way, we can help target exactly where the needs are in Minnesota, in the rural areas. So we've got a lot of work to do, as we know. We've got at least 1 million, but we're guessing. So we're hoping that this will get passed, and we can help people in need.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. Thanks to me. Thank you. And before we begin our council meeting, I've been asked by one of our state legislators to allow her to speak before we start the council meeting, and so I'm going to recognize State Representative Karen Clark, who's going to speak about an item that's later on our agenda. Thank you, Council President Johnson and colleagues on the city council. I'm really happy to be here. This is getting to be an opportunity I've had a couple of times now, so I really do appreciate it. I wanted to just start by extending my congratulations to Mr. Ginder. Turns out that we began our public service exactly the same year. So, only I don't think I've got the pie crust done as well as he does, apparently. What I wanted to bring to you today is an opportunity for the city council to help the state of Minnesota bring some resources to our city in the form of the East Phillips Indoor Urban Farm. And there's a document that I think you all have before you. I was invited by the Commissioner of Agriculture to submit to him a proposal to create, to have state dollars be offered by the governor in a supplemental budget for creating some urban agriculture opportunities in the city of Minneapolis and elsewhere. And he has four sites in mind. One of them is the Project Sweetie Pie opportunity in northeast Minneapolis. I believe it's in Councilmember Johnson's ward, and it serves the north side of Minneapolis. The purpose of it is to really serve the north side of Minneapolis, North High School and others, very much in the issue of food justice and those opportunities for people to get access to good urban farming opportunities. The other one is this East Phillips Indoor Urban Farm that you see before you on this document, and I'm going to just talk about it very briefly. Third one is at Metro State on the east side in St. Paul. And I'm not sure where the fourth one is, but each of these have to do with looking at urban agriculture that serves communities of color, low-income communities, where the issue of food justice is really important. So I wanted to just share this with you today because there's going to be a motion later, I believe it's number eight on the agenda, for the acquisition and redevelopment of the Roof Depot site. And what this is, is an offer to help bring some state dollars at the invitation of the governor's administration to the city of Minneapolis for that purpose, and also for the northeast and north Minneapolis area. I know that you care about those things, so I want to just briefly say, this is a compromise at this point. We are realizing that you're going to be voting on the number eight agenda later that has to do with the Roof Depot, and Councilmember Conno, I know, has some language and a motion that she's bringing forward. This is in support of that, because if you can pass that today, this gives me more leverage to take back to the governor and say, yes, we want that $3 million that we're asking for from the state of Minnesota for that site, and it's about $3 million for the Project Sweetie Pie in the north and northeast Minneapolis as well. So if you just look at this document, you'll see that there's a number of neighborhood organizations that have been very involved in this, in East Phillips, Little Earth of United Tribes, Tamalas, Ybisticoletas, East Phillips Improvement Coalition, the Women's Environmental Institute, and Growing Power from Milwaukee has been involved with us in looking at this. Growing Power Incorporated, some of you may know of Will Allen and his work. It's a national and international figure in helping develop urban agriculture. But what's new that I can show you here in the document today is also private enterprise collaborators that will help add, what we are told, approximately another $7 million to this $3 million, bringing about a $10 million investment to that site. Those private collaborators include Dean DeVolles of DGR Architecture, Devo Hotel of Minnesota Sustainable Development Group, the Turquoise River, which is an organization with the Mandan, Idatsa, Iracara, excuse me, tribal nations who have federal Section 8A status and can bring federal dollars, plus the University of Minnesota Center for Science, Technology, and Environmental Policy at the Humphrey School. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention today and say that this motion that's coming before you is an opportunity, and it's an opportunity that will help me bring home to Minneapolis. $3 million for the south side, $3 million for the north side, and I just hope that you will help do that. And I think if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer, but these are all for structural planning renovation of existing facilities in both examples. And the point is to work on this issue of environmental and food justice, and it's something that I hope that we can be team members working together on this. We know that it'll be a place where living where jobs can be created, and culturally specific and entrepreneurial opportunities, businesses, small businesses can work, and they'll be bringing forward, you know, using traditional cultural agricultural skills and opportunities. So, Madam President, if there's any questions you have for me, I'd be glad to answer, but my request is that you positively consider that motion, and it means a lot to us. And I'm going to be fighting for you all, us all, over at the Capitol for this money. Thank you, Representative Clark, and we appreciate your advocacy on behalf of the city of Minneapolis for so many years, what, 35 years, right? Yes, that's right. Mr. Ginder, thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Representative Clark? Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate your input and glad you could join us. And we have another resolution, which I... We have a resolution honoring the historic relationships among the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Nawa, and other indigenous nations, and recognizing the Mexica New Year. And you're going to have to help me, Councilmember Conno.
Nawi.
Nawi.
Tekpah.
Tekpah. Tekpah Day in Minneapolis. So I'm going to turn this over to the expert, Councilmember Conno.
Thank you. If we can have our community speakers and our elders and our guests today, please join us at the front of the room. We can have you, is there young people that can join us up front, please? Is there any youth? Traditionally, we would start this by having me begin the speech, but we're going to actually start this in the ancestral way, where we're going to have the original inhabitants of Minnesota let us open up this conversation. So are Dakota elders going to start?
Yeah, those are the... In the language of the first Minnesotans, the Dakota people, that's a greeting when translated means hello, my relatives, with a good heart. I greet all of you with a handshake. And I also too, as a Dakota person, would like to welcome you to what was once all Dakota land until, and the white, I think the first recorded encounter that I knew about occurred around 1640 with two guys named, one was Radisson, I think the other guy was, I forgot his name already. So anyway, and besides, even if I saw it, I can't pronounce it. Anyway, it was a French name. But these two people, as far as I know, were the first, and then in just in, you know, 200-plus years, well, they had no land when they came, but then in 200-plus years, now they have all the land, and we are left with maybe 1,500, 1,600 acres of the vast, of the 54 million acres that comprise the present-day state of Minnesota. But anyway, I welcome you to Dakota land, even though we're not militarily, economically, politically in control of this land, that those of us who follow the ancient ways, the ceremonies of our people, will always feel, as long as any of us are alive, that we are still the spiritual owners of this land. I want to say thank you to the Minneapolis City Council for sponsoring this resolution, the Mexica New Year 2016. Also, that I want to thank the Minneapolis City Council for passing a resolution that I wrote back in the year 2012, the 150th anniversary of the Dakota-US War of 1862. And that resolution included words like genocide, bounties, concentration camps, mass executions, forced marches, et cetera. And as far as I know, this is the only, in my limited experience, this is the only white man's official document at any level of government, state or federal or municipal or county, that contains such words like that. And so even though it was probably not a little step, baby step in the right direction, from my point of view, it was historic, and I use it to say Minneapolis City Council did this. And so that opened the way, and hopefully it will make progress down the road, and hopefully some of this will be taught in the schools, both public and private, here in the state of Minnesota. And so again, and I thank the Minneapolis City Council for passing or considering or passing this resolution concerning the Mexica New Year. So with that, I think I'll turn it back to, oh, yes, and I want to thank particularly Councilwoman Alondra Conno for her including me in this, because one of the things that when people think of native peoples, indigenous peoples, American Indians, whatever they call us, that we're usually overlooked, we're not mentioned, because there's only 2,400 of us now in the four Dakota communities. And like the Anishinaabe, they are about 45,000, and even some of the local or recent immigration groups that have, immigrant groups that have come to Minnesota, they number more than us. So I was really pleased that I was asked to participate in this event, and I think it was very proper and appropriate as well that a representative of the Dakota Oyate, the Dakota people or nation participate. So I thank you, and I'll turn it back to Councilwoman Conno.
Now, we're going to have some words from another traditional community here in Minnesota, Tony Stillby from the Red Light Nation.
Thank you, Alondra, for inviting me. Bonjour. Oh, awesome. Thank you, Chris, for your words. Chris is very eloquent, and I just want to share with you a little bit of our history as an Anishinaabe woman. I feel it's my role to really step up to the plate and bring some leadership to healing, and I think part of that role is in partnership with our indigenous people. And I'm just so appreciative to be included in this and being part of a collective of people that are moving forward and looking at ways to heal our nations and do that in partnership and really become strong and put a face on the people who aren't able to speak and really be able to walk forward in a good way. And that's what I'm really, the message I'm here to share. So I'm so happy to see all of you, and I hope that you consider coming to the festivities in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
So I wanted to mention a couple of things. It wasn't until I came to Minneapolis in 1999 that I became really aware of the strong indigenous roots of this state, and I feel really blessed to have been able to attend the University of Minnesota as a first-generation college student, where I learned a lot about where the names of our lakes and our rivers and our streets come from, about the strong legacy and history and the resilience of that community that has withstood many, many violent acts and acts of oppression. And as a young woman, that helped me to really understand a little bit more about myself and where I came from. And Mexico is a very rich country in indigenous roots as well. There's many, many indigenous languages. They're not dialects, they're languages of their own. They have nations of their own as well. Where I'm from, in Chihuahua, the indigenous community there is the Rar á muri community, more traditionally known as the Par á omara, that are well-known for running long distances. And then my children, subsequently, I chose indigenous names, Mexican indigenous names for all three of my children that no one can ever spell or pronounce, right? But that's okay, we're going to continue to move forward with our daily struggles. And I'm just so happy and honored to be here on the council, representing the largest American Indian urban population, and now my Mexica family and community. So with that, I will read this resolution, and then we will have some of our organizers and community members who are a part of this Mexica New Year address the crowd as well. So this is a resolution of the mayor and city council honoring the historic relationships among the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Nawa, and other indigenous nations, and recognizing the Mexica New Year, Nawi Tekpah Day in Minneapolis.
It wasn't until I came to Minneapolis in 1999 that I became really aware of the strong indigenous roots of this state. And I feel really blessed to have been able to attend the University of Minnesota as a first-generation college student, where I learned a lot about where the names of our lakes and our rivers and our streets come from, about the strong legacy and history and the resilience of that community that has withstood many, many violent acts and acts of oppression. And as a young woman, that helped me to really understand a little bit more about myself and where I came from. And Mexico is a very rich country in indigenous roots as well. There's many, many indigenous languages. They're not dialects, they're languages of their own. They have nations of their own as well. Where I'm from, in Chihuahua, the indigenous community there is the Rar á muri community, more traditionally known as Atar o Mara, that are well-known for, for running long distances. And, and then my children, subsequently, I chose indigenous names, Mexican indigenous names for all three of my children that no one can ever spell or pronounce, right? But that's okay, we're going to continue to move forward with our daily struggles. And, and I'm just so happy and honored to be here on the council, representing the largest American Indian urban population and now my Mexica, Mexica family and community. So with that, I will read this resolution, and then we will have some of our organizers and community members who are a part of this Mexica New Year address the crowd as well. So this is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council honoring the historic relationships among the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Nawa, and other indigenous nations and recognizing the Mexica New Year, Nawi Tekpah Day in Minneapolis. Whereas in 2012, the city of Minneapolis declared the year of the Dakota, and in 2013 began recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day to address the racial inequities in our city, thereby demonstrating that government entities and other institutions can change their policies and practices to acknowledge, respect, and honor indigenous people. Whereas, the city of Minneapolis recognizes that the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Nawa, and other indigenous nations are the original inhabitants of this continent. Whereas, the international borders imposed by colonial rule have severely hindered and disrupted the political, economic, scientific, artistic, and cultural collaborations between northern and southern indigenous nations. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis acknowledges the importance of restoring and promoting the ancestral connections among indigenous nations which predate statehood. Whereas, the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Nawa, and other indigenous nations enhance our great city through their political, cultural, and scientific knowledge, such as timekeeping measurements and records. Whereas, the Nawa people and related indigenous communities have kept their own records of time for thousands of years, and the Mexica created the Tonal Machiot, a timekeeping structure commonly referred to as the sunstone, that documents the bioenergetic alignment of the cycles of the sun, moon, Venus, and earth. Whereas, in this Gregorian year 2016, the indigenous Mexican peoples, also known as the Mexica, will end the year Yay Akat and begin the year Nawi Tekpah with a new cycle occurring on March 11, 2016, at approximately 6:45 PM. Whereas, the alliance of the traditional Mexica groups Kalpuli Yaasenoshli, Mexica Yolot, Witzilin, Santa Ursula de Koapa, Kuautemoc...